Everybody, I would like to declare the meeting, the council meeting opened. I'd like to remind everybody that in accordance with council's code of meeting practice, this meeting is being livestreamed. The knowledge of country and prayer of council and affirmation be read by the acting chief executive officer, Mr. Eddie Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, councillors. Before we begin proceedings, I'd like to make the acknowledgement of country. We'd like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors past and present, the Cabragow clan of the Darug nation. I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by people of the Darawal and Darug nations. The affirmation of council. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the wellbeing of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Tonight, we affirm our hope for sound decision making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. The prayer of council. For the God of our faith, we who are gathered at Liverpool City Council pray for the good government of our city. We pray for the wellbeing of all Liverpool's residents, no matter their race, gender or creed. Tonight, we pray for sound decision making by council, which can improve the quality of life in our city. We pray for Australia, our nation's future, for the mayor, councillors and staff of council and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. Amen.
Thank you very much for that. Do we have any apologies? No apologies? Thank you. Someone has their mic on. If you could please mute it. The next item on the agenda is condolences and I have two. One is for Bob Ingram O A O. Tonight, we pause to remember one of Liverpool's most highly respected and accomplished sons, Bob Ingram O A O, the son of farmer Walter Ingram, and he was born in Kasula in 1931. On his father's death in 1953, Bob and his older brother Jack took over the family's poultry breeding business, which was founded in 1918. Bob and Jack were formidable team together. They transformed Ingram's Enterprises into the largest producer of chickens and turkeys in Australia. Bob continued to run the company until Jack's death in 2003. He sold Ingram's Enterprises in 2013. Bob and Jack had also inherited the brood mare Valiant Rose from their father. They used Valiant Rose to begin building the largest thoroughbred horse racing and breeding operation in Australia at the time. They raced, among others, Champions Octagonal and a lot of them, with their distinctive Cherise colours becoming well known in the racing circuit. In 2004, Bob was inducted into the Australian Racing Hall of Fame. Bob sold the racehorse breeding operation in 2008. He was well respected philanthropist as well, and he was also well known for establishing an independent health and medical research institute in Liverpool, which we all know as the Ingram's Medical Research Centre. And that was in 2012. Today, the institute is home for more than 350 researchers who are leading advanced medical breakthroughs and clinical discoveries with a commitment to saving lives and improving outcomes. Bob's gifts to the institute exceeded $15 million, ranking him among Australia's most generous supporters of health and medical research. Bob also received a number of awards for his service to the Liverpool community, including his centenary medal in January 2001. In January 2003, he was appointed the officer of the Order of Australia for service to the poultry industry and as pioneer in research and development and to the community through his support of a range of charities and healthcare facilities. Bob died on Tuesday, the 22nd of September, at his home aged 88, surrounded by his family. He is survived by four children, 10 grandchildren and three great grandchildren. Bob's wife, Norma, died 10 years ago. In a statement, Bob's family said his hard work, commitment and philosophy of doing the right things and doing it right underpinned everything he did. On behalf of Liverpool City Council, I express my deepest condolences and well wishes to Bob's family and friends during this very difficult time. May he rest in peace. The second condolence is to one of our fellow councillors. On behalf of Liverpool Council, councillor Carnib, I humbly express our deepest condolences to you and your family at the loss of your sister Yusra. Yusra Ahmed Carnib passed away on the 16th of September 2020 after a very brief illness. Our thoughts and prayers are with Yusra's family and friends at this difficult time, in particular her six children. I'm sure that Yusra's spirit will live on in all those who have had the pleasure of knowing her. May she also rest in peace. I move the usual condolences be conducted and we write to the families of Mr. Ingram and Yusra's family, expressing our condolences for their loss.
Well, happy to second it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Deed. I'll put it, those in favour, those against, carried. Yes, go ahead, councillor Blute.
Yeah, Val Bob Ingram, what an absolute legend. That's all I have to say. You've said enough, Madam Mayor.
Yes, he was definitely the real deal, as they say.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I'll put it, those in favour, those against, carried. Next item is declarations of interest. Do we have any tonight?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. In relation to item Q W N O one, as I declared at the last council meeting, I hold office in relation to an organisation that has no regulatory powers, but is involved in relation to the issues raised. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Sheldon. Any others?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Q W N O five. I assume the line of questioning is in regards to that 13 kilometre circle around the airport. And if that's the case, then I'm within that circle. So just non pecuniary, non significant.
Fine. Any others?
Mayor, on the same item, which is my question, non pecuniary, less than significant. I wasn't going to go anywhere near the 13 kilometre range in my line or for that question. That's something that council will take up without my involvement.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Any others? No? All right, thank you, councillors. The next item on the agenda is representations from the community and we have one from Lauralee and Wayne Burns. They have submitted a written submission on E G R O four and that will be included in the minutes. The next item is a merrill minute. Since July 2020, widespread and heavy rain has been falling across Sudan in North East Africa, causing unprecedented flooding in 17 of 18 states. The disaster has claimed over 100 lives, with more than 500,000 people in urgent need of shelter, water, food, hygiene, healthcare and other basic needs. An estimated 100,000 homes have been carried away by floodwaters and crops have been destroyed. A lack of clean drinking waters increasing the risk of exposure to waterborne disease. On the 4th of September, the Sudanese government declared a three month national state of emergency. The Nile River, excuse me, the Nile River and some of its tributaries have also reached their highest levels in 100 years. Sena, Khartoum and Al Jazeera are most affected states. Teams of volunteers in Sudan are providing emergency support, shelter and food to people affected by this disaster and helping them move to higher and safer ground. A number of people in the Sudanese community in Liverpool and in the Greater Western Sydney, we have a large population in our area. And we're deeply concerned about the floods and their impact on Sudan, sorry. These residents also have concerns for safety and welfare of family members and friends who have remained there. On behalf of Liverpool City Council, I express my sympathy and support to the people of Sudan during this difficult time. Council values the contribution of the Sudanese Australians and how they've made a rich fabric of Liverpool. I'm moving that council donates $5,000 to the International Federation Red Cross and Red Crescent Society's Emergency Appeal for Sudan. And we write to the Embassy of the Republic of Sudan in Australia to express council's sympathy and support and to advise that donation. Is there any opposition?
No opposition, Madam Mayor, but can you increase the amount of money to 10,000 dollars? As long as you're sending the money to the embassy of Sudan. It doesn't look good, 5,000 dollars from Liverpool local government.
I most certainly would be happy to take that on board, councillor Deed. Thank you for your suggestion. There is a number three and we write to the Liverpool Australian Sudanese Community Organisation to express our sympathy and support and advise them of the donation. Any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the carried. The next item is on page 50 of your reports.
Madam Mayor, we need to confirm the minutes from the previous meeting.
Oh, thank you, councillor. I apologise for that.
I'll move them.
Thank you.
I second it.
Thank you, moved by councillor Hagerty, seconded by councillor Deed. I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the carried. I turned the page way too quickly, sorry. On page 50 is the first report.
I'm happy to move that way, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Does he get a second now?
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Yes, councillor, what's your question?
On the, this is the exhibition of the revenue pricing policy. A question is relating to the fees and charges for telecommunications towers. Are they included in this report? I couldn't find them.
I'll ask the acting CEO to ask the appropriate staff member.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Hampuris, can you enlighten us on that?
Yes, through the CEO. I believe that the telecommunications charges are itemised in the fees and charges. However, I note that there are certain telecommunications companies which have unique agreements with council. And if those agreements are still, if they haven't expired, then obviously they're bound to those agreements. But subsequent to that, they're going to be, we're going to harmonise those and those would be in line with council's fees and charges. So to answer your question, councillor, they should be itemised in the fees and charges there. I don't have it in front of me though.
Fine, I have some concerns regarding that. I'm sure other councils received emails from a company. So what I would like, if I can move a motion, to have that item taken out of the report and be brought back to the next budget review meeting for further consideration. Is that possible?
Yes, councillor, what you can do, I would suggest that you adopt the pricing policy with the exception of that item.
Thank you.
Request that that item be returned to council as ASAP.
Yes, quite happy to second it, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so councillor Rhodes, are you happy with that amendment, councillor Rhodes?
Yes, absolutely, Madam Mayor.
All right, we've got councillor Rhodes, councillor Deed. Did the typist get that okay?
Question me when you're ready, if you're on.
Yes, go ahead, councillor, Chitty.
Through yourself to, we're talking about the road occupancy charges there. And it's probably an opportune time to the relevant officer through you, mayor. Does council actually advertise or have a easy to get to map of what road closures are in place or what partial road closures are in place and how long they're in place for?
I'll ask the acting CEO to nominate the appropriate staff member.
Mr. Smith, can you please assist us?
Thank you. And through the acting CEO, at this stage, no, we don't. But we're certainly looking at that, given the significant number of road occupancy applications that are being issued within our growth areas. So we're certainly looking at that to have it easily accessible on our website so that the community knows what roads will be occupied for how long as the rural roads become urbanised, in particularly in Austral.
Thanks. Just another one, if I can, mayor, through yourself, CEO to Mr. Smith. What standards are in place when road closures are applied for and approved? I mean, does it mean that residents drive on a gravel or on a dirt track in order for, you know, the development to occur? Don't want to stop development, obviously, because the longer we hold it for, the more it costs and it gets passed on. But are there certain standards that must be met?
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. And through the acting CEO, yes. When an application for a road occupancy is submitted to council, council's traffic engineering team ensure that there is an operational traffic management plan in place so that at least half the road is available for traffic. Obviously, as development occurs in our growth areas, there is a need to close part of the road. In some instances, we need to close or authorise the closure of the road for a period of time while half road constructions are undertaken. But council's primary consideration is ensuring that the impacts on the community are mitigated as much as possible. But as you said, in these areas, they are developing and the road upgrades are required. But of course, if there are issues that we need to address, then we'll continue to be improving that situation.
Thanks. And if I may, just one final one, mayor. When can we expect that map or the easy to reference guide for what's closed?
At this stage, I don't have that details in front of me, but we can certainly provide that to the councils. But my expectation is we could do that fairly swiftly, councillor.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Councillor Hagerty, you have your hand up.
Yeah, just in regards to councillor Hachidi's line of questioning. Yeah, developer occupies a road, maybe they're doing half at a time. Obviously, the roads out in Austral aren't, some of them aren't in the best condition. But is there, I guess, a minimum standard that the developers need to keep these roads up to while they're doing what they do? I guess that question comes from a particular patch of road where, from all reports, it's in pretty terrible condition and every time it rains, basically, you know, potholes get washed away and cars have had significant damage done to their suspension due to the quality of that road. So is there any leverage or any ability for us to inspect these roads, even though they're under an occupancy, to make sure they're kept up to a decent standard?
Mr. Smith?
Yes, and thank you. And through the acting CEO, absolutely. So council's still responsible for making sure our public roads are trafficable. So if there are instances where the quality of the road and the riding surface of the road is of concern, you know, that information can certainly be provided through to me and we can investigate that.
Well, you'll be getting a few photos, either probably tomorrow or the day after.
Okay, thank you, councillors. You have a motion before you. Is there any other discussion? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the carried. The next item is the election of the deputy mayor. It's on page 55. I will be vacating the chair and turning the chair over to the executive, sorry, the acting executive officer, who act as returning officer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have to first of all seek a motion as to the method of voting. And councillors, under normal circumstances, we would consider whether that should be an open vote, a secret ballot or a preferential ballot. As the report points out, since we are meeting remotely, the election will have to be conducted by open vote. And I would ask you to pass the resolution below prior to that vote.
Move that way, mayor. Seconded it?
Moved by councillor Chitty and seconded by councillor Rhodes. It'd be number two.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'll put it, you should put it. Anybody oppose? See, that's carried. Keep cheering.
Thank you for your assistance, Madam Mayor. I can confirm that I've received nominations from two candidates. They are councillor Hadid and councillor Hagerty. And as returning officer, I would now call for a vote. Now, we've given consideration to the best method for this under the circumstances. And I think the best approach is to, as we do with other resolutions of council, using the teams' approach, that we go down through each councillor and ask for your approval. So if I can begin that process and ask councillor Ayed.
Thank you. I will vote for councillor Hadid, please.
Thank you. Councillor Balot?
Councillor Hadid.
Councillor Hachidi?
Councillor Hadid.
Councillor Hadid.
Councillor Hadid.
Councillor Hagerty?
I'm on the board, councillor Hagerty.
Councillor Har?
Councillor Hadid.
Councillor Caliander?
Councillor Hagerty?
Councillor Carnib? Councillor Carnib?
You may have to ring him.
Thank you. Councillor Rhodes?
Councillor Hadid.
Councillor Sheldon?
Councillor Hagerty, thanks.
And Mayor Waller?
Councillor Hagerty, thank you.
Thank you for that. So we have a winner. And councillor Hadid.
Congratulations, councillor Hadid.
By six votes to five. And I would call that councillor Hadid be declared the deputy mayor of Liverpool City Council for the term 30th of September 2020 to the 4th of September 2021 and the council's register of delegations be amended accordingly.
Mayor, can I move that with a point three or acting CEO?
What the point three is, councillor? What is your point three?
That we thank the outgoing deputy mayor for his three years of service to the role.
Happy to second it?
I'll be happy to move that motion.
Moved by councillor Chitty and it's seconded by?
Councillor Hadid.
Hadid, thank you. The executive, the acting CEO has moved the motion. Is there any opposition? It's carried, acting CEO. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can I congratulate both candidates on their nominations? And in particular, obviously, the councillor Hadid. And can I hand back control of the meeting to the mayor?
Thank you very much. I'd like to congratulate councillor Deed and also thank councillor Carnib for his three year service.
Well, Madam Mayor, if I can say a few words, first of all, thank you very much. And I would like to thank all council colleagues for putting trust in me to serve as a deputy mayor for the next 12 months. All what I can say, I can promise you guys, I will do my best and utmost to serve Liverpool City Council and the resident of Liverpool in the best possible way. And thank you all very much.
Thank you, councillor Deed. The next item is CEO O three and the recommendations are on page 58. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, looking at it, I would like to nominate myself for the Companion Animal Advisory Committee. And I would like to also nominate myself for the Environmental Advisory Committee, the Heritage Advisory Committee, the Liverpool Access Committee. And once again, for the Southwest City Planning Panel as an alternative, if we need somebody. And also for the Southwest. Oh, for the Pedestrian Active Transport and Traffic Committee. I'm saying those, Madam Mayor, because I attend all those meetings and it might just be a time that it is needed to make a quorum. So as I attend them all, I'm putting myself down for those particular committees. And I would like to retain the Southwest City West Rock. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Are there any other nominations?
Can I nominate councillor Balot for the MRC committee, please? Board for the MRC.
So just a point of order on that one. The constitution was changed about two years ago and there is no, there's no longer an extra official board member in council.
Okay.
Okay, well, this is fine.
Thank you.
Can I nominate myself for the new or at least established district, please?
Are there any other nominations?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the idea was the same ones as I've served on before, which is the Aboriginal Conservative Committee, the Risk and Improvement Committee, the Environmental Advisory Committee, Heritage Advisory Committee, the Liverpool Access Committee, Tourism and CBD Committee, Youth Council and the external one, George's River Combined Council Committee. But I'm happy to turn up to more if there's any.
Councillor Sheldon, you're already on those, aren't you?
Yes.
Okay. Would it be wise then, councillors, given we've had some additions, that we, someone move a motion that we maintain the status quo with the exception of, look?
I'm quite happy to do that.
Just makes it easier.
Yes, Madam, I can add committees.
And I mean, as the mayor, I'm automatic chairs of all these committees, but happily delegate when I'm not available, so that's fine. But I most certainly wish to continue on the Access Committee, the Youth Council, the Aboriginal Committee and the Planning Panel. So, but I, because of the virtual situation, I managed to get to more meetings now, which is amazing.
Madam Mayor, just to clarify, as it's kind of chopping and changing a little bit, can we just see what it looks like at the moment?
Yeah, we've got, that would be wise. I could ask the George to put that up, the existing reps. Okay, so Aboriginal Conservative, the mayor and councillor Sheldon. As Aboriginal Audit Deputy Mayor among councillor, so it was councillor Sheldon and councillor Carnib. Kasula, it was the mayor, deputy mayor among councillor. So the current ones is Mayor Waller and councillor Caliander. Next, Nichino's. Companion Animal Advisory, we've got the mayor and one councillor. So that's myself and councillor Rhodes, which is fine. The district forums is councillor Harle to chair, chair the, whatever it was that was up the top there.
The rule, Madam Mayor. Happy to remain there.
Yep, the current release, new release is councillor Hagerty is currently in that chair and councillor Deed is nominated to be in that chair. Councillor Hagerty, do you wish to maintain that?
I do.
Okay, so we might have to sidebar that one for an election. So just, I could get George to hold on to those two.
Can I be on that too, a mayor with councillor Hagerty and councillor Hadid, please?
Pardon?
You can attend it anytime you want. This is about chairing it.
This is the chair, not the attendance. Councils can attend any meeting they wish, but they, okay. So we have the chairperson for 2168 is myself, that's still form. Chairperson for the current eastern district is councillor Rhodes.
I'm happy to remain that way, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Keep going. Keep moving up. Environment Advisory Committee, we've got two councils, councillor Rhodes, councillor Sheldon. Before, we had councillor Sheldon and councillor Harle. Are you happy with that, councillor Harle?
Yes, I'm happy with that.
Okay, next. Uh Heritage Advisory, councillor Did and councillor Hall, councillor Rhodes and councillor Sheldon. So councillor Hadid and councillor Hall, are you happy with that change?
Yeah, this is fine. For me, councillor Hall can take my place, no problem.
Okay. Intermodal Precinct Committee, two councillors, we've got councillor Chitty and councillor Rhodes, there's no change to that.
Unless someone wants. That one needs a chair. That that one needs a chair, I think.
Go back. Um representatives to councillors.
I'm happy to nominate as chair of that committee, Madam Mayor.
Hi councillor, are you happy with that councillor Chitty?
Absolutely.
Hey, well, there you go. Councillor Rhodes is nominated as chair. Next item is the access committee. Um I'd chair that one.
Madam Mayor, can I point out that I'm not trying to take people off these committees? I just want to be registered as a committee member. Uh because there are times when people aren't available and do not turn up.
I understand that councillor, but it's um it we have one, we usually have two folk. So at the moment, it's in the access committee, it's myself and councillor Hall. Um and now we've got and councillor Sheldon, so I'm I'm maintaining my chair in that particular committee. So it will have to be an election between you two, which.
Uh there, I'll save you the trouble. I don't press. I'll turn up anyway, so councillor.
And I'm turning up anyway, Madam Mayor.
That's fine, that's fine. So um the next one's the sports committee. Councillor Caliander.
Yes, I'm happy to continue, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next one is, ooh, oh. Uh Tourism CBD, mayor and four councillors, so we've got councillor.
Be included on that one, Madam Mayor.
We have five. So we've got five enthusiastic councillors.
That's fine, Miss. Councillor Rhodes can take my spot.
Okay, so we've got councillor Sheldon, councillor Rhodes, councillor Ballut, councillor Did, okay. And then I'm able to delegate if I can't attend. All right, that's fine. Um next. Next committee. Youth council, the mayor and two councillors. And what we have here is myself and councillor Sheldon.
I'm happy to continue, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And councillor Hagerty, you still happy to continue?
Yep.
Okay, so myself, councillor Hagerty and councillor Caliander, not councillor.
Um I missed the traffic committee because it was called something else now pedestrian or something.
Yeah, we I we will have to go back. I think we did miss it. That's okay. So councillor Sheldon, we have an extra body on that one.
That's all right, I don't press.
Okay, fine. So we can remove councillor Sheldon. We have the three now. Let's go back to the pedestrians. They're not pedestrians really. There we go. So the mayor or delegate and current rep is councillor Hagerty on my behalf.
So councillor Rhodes, you you were happy to attend, but I'm I'd like to remain the chair.
Um unless, well, is there anybody else down on that committee? There was other people down on that committee before.
It's not a council committee.
All right.
It's an external committee.
No worries.
And the mayor has the power to delegate who represents them. So um while we're trying to be reasonable in this situation, um councillor Hagerty's been attending on my behalf. Um next.
All I'm saying, Madam Mayor, is that I attend these meetings regularly and have done for the last four years. So um you know, I need to be on these committees for times when people do not turn up.
Well councillor, you can't be if there is restriction. You have a a set number of committee people. And it's not as it's not eleven councillors plus, it's X amount of councillors. So if you're not a nominated councillor on this committee, you don't count.
So on the pedestrian one, if we just go back to it, is it is it um two councillors, your councillor Hagerty is your person that you.
I asked you to not, yeah, to represent me on that committee, yes.
And then there is there another councillor needed on that?
Only one because it's an external committee, it's not our committee.
Okay.
Okay, so uh George's River, oh, we're moving again, George's River Combined Council Committee. Two reps, we had councillor Hall and councillor Sheldon in the past, we've got councillor Sheldon.
I'm happy to remain.
Thank you councillor Hall, so we still have the same. The next one is Western City Market Resource Centre, which has actually been changed, George. Um. Councillor Hagerty, would you like to explain that again, just for everybody's interest, please? I know you're there, I can see you further.
Um previously, it was a member, member based, membership based board and one of the spots was um left for council to have an ex officio member. Uh two or three years ago, the constitution was changed and the organisation structure changed and it's now um eight skills based members and you need to apply and go through that process. So that spot that used to be um left for a member of council is no longer there.
So it needs to be deleted.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right, we did just do. Next one, the bushfires. Councillor Hall, you happy to still be in the fires?
Yes, I'll remain there.
Thank you. Uh the libraries, I remember this one last year. Councillor Caliander, you still happy to be the librarian?
I am indeed.
Thank you. Next item is the southwest planning panels, there's myself, councillor Hall, councillor Hagerty, councillor Carnib and councillor Rhodes as alternatives. So we have three alternatives. Um and that remains the same. Okay, next thing is the Caliander was the representative of Southwest Academy of Sports. You're happy to remain in that role councillor?
I am, Madam Mayor.
Okay. West Rock is the mayor and one councillor and I delegated to councillor Rhodes to take my position for the moment. And councillor Ballut is the other one. So councillor Ballut, you're happy to maintain that presence?
I'm happy to maintain that, Madam Mayor.
All right.
Uh Ma- Madam Mayor, can I contest that as well?
Uh there's only two there councillor and councillor Rhodes is representing me on that committee.
Okay, now if if you can't make it and councillor Ballut can't make it, what happens?
Well, we don't have reps. We've only allowed two bites of the cherry on the on the um committee. So we've got two people nominated to act on behalf of council. Um councillor Rhodes is my delegation and councillor Ballut is the other party. So um it's also, as you would understand, an external committee, so it's not our committee as such, so external ru- um rules, if you like.
Fine.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, just on Wesrock, unless they've changed it in recent years, I think I'm sure council is allowed to nominate alternates in case the delegates aren't there.
Okay, all right.
Unless that has changed, councillor Rhodes.
I don't know.
Sure that it is that way, Madam Mayor, and.
All right, well then if you want to, you could apply, you could actually have councillor Hall as an alternate.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to be an alternate on West Rock?
I'm happy to be.
All right, councillor Caliander, thank you. Moving on to the next next item, or not next item, but the next thingy. West Rock, because we've done, done, uh I know we've done those, we've done those. George, we've done them all, I think now, haven't we? So if councillors are happy with that, could we have a mover? Oh, we also have to put in the the extra companion animal advisory committee. That's not there, there it is. So I've got the mayor and one councillor, myself and councillor Rhodes. Okay, so if we cut, George, have we covered them all?
We have a couple.
Um yeah, I'm ready.
We we've covered them all. There's a couple, I believe, we still need to um vote on because we've got a couple of candidates. So this forums, councillor Hagerty and councillor Hadid for the current new release established district chairperson, councillor Hagerty and councillor um Hadid?
I think so.
Yep, all right. I will, um we've got a voting list fortunately today, so there you go. So and they're both names start with H, so that makes it a bit harder. And uh Hadid comes before G, so we'll do councillor Did first. Who um now we need the like the voting list for the deputy mayor, George, sorry, if you could throw that up. Yep, it's the same too. Okay, um just to remove the X's, if you could.
We're just copying and pasting now.
Yeah, I worked that out by the listening to the keys. All right. Okay, so councillor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for councillor Hadid.
Thank you. Councillor Ballut.
Councillor Hadid.
Councillor Chitty.
Hadid.
Councillor Hagerty.
Hagerty.
Councillor Hall.
Sorry, Hadid.
Okay, councillor Caliander.
Councillor Hagerty, please.
Councillor Carnib.
Hagerty.
Councillor Rhodes.
Yeah, councillor Hadid.
Councillor Sheldon.
Councillor Hagerty.
Okay, well, I declare councillor Did elected to the chair of the new release. Um did you have another one, George?
So. Just have a look if we've bolded another one or not. All the others are fine, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much for your cooperation councillor. So if someone could move those formally.
Yeah, I'll move them here.
Thank you, moved by councillor Chitty, seconded by councillor Sheldon. I'll put it those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Councillor Hall, you have your hand up. Did you wish to speak?
My apologies, Madam Mayor.
That's okay, no worries. Thank you for that. The next item is mayoral direction pursuant to section two two six of the Local Govern Act on page sixty nine.
Move that way, Mayor.
Thank you.
Second it, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Addition, I'll put it those in favour, those against, declare it carried. The next items on page seventy three.
Mayor, I'd like to move it as per the book with an additional point.
Yes, what's your additional point?
Uh now I can't find it. Um notes that the maximum cap for state members of parliament is five hundred dollars and is discretionary.
Okay. So you're just noting.
Just noting.
Okay, fair enough. We've got a second up?
Uh yes, happy to, if it includes the members that were put in there, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, it's got the, it's it's adopting the new rules. Okay, we have a mover and a second up. We've got the noting of the caps in parliament, five hundred dollars and it's discretionary. Any opposition? I'll put it those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item is E grow on one on page nineteen.
And now I'd like to move the motion as is in the book, and I just have one point to add, if possible.
What is your point councillor?
Yep, so sorry, I've just got the right here with me. Okay, so be number eight.
Mm hmm.
That the planning proposals for the plow flower power site and concrete crushes sites in Moorbank be forwarded to the local planning panel and be brought back to council. Um now, Madam Mayor, I would like to put a timeframe in there and I was hoping that somebody could give me an answer of when would be a realistic time, uh preferably as soon as possible, because it has been in the pipeline for quite quite a while of years now, many years.
Um can I ask the acting CEO and ask Mr Smith to make some comments on that one, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll defer to Mr Smith.
Thank you through the acting CEO. Uh thank you very much for that additional point councillor. Uh for the information of the councillors, we are planning on reporting both of those planning proposals uh to the November local planning panel meeting at the latest. Um we're going to try and get them to next month's council meet, uh sorry, next month's local planning panel meeting. If not, it will be the November meeting uh and then to council at the December meeting. That's that's our current um plan.
Do you have that councillor?
I am, I just wanna um um now if it can come before council in November and we have December written there, does management have the discretion to put it before us? Mr Smith?
Thank you. Yes, if we can get it to council earlier than December, we will. So if we can get it to council in October and there's no amendments that we believe need to be made, um there should not be an issue with getting it to the November council meeting. Um but what we're saying is there might need to be changes depending upon any recommendations from the local planning panel. So I would prefer December and of course if we can get it to you earlier, we absolutely will.
Okay, um I'm sorry, I just wanna um reread that, that's.
Yep, that's great. Perfect. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for that.
Thank you councillors. Is there a second up?
Happy to second it, Madam Mayor.
Is there any opposition?
Um maybe can those words be fixed up, please?
Words be fixed up.
Uh by the earliest council meeting in twenty twenty. Okay, sorry, Mayor, that's good.
You okay? You okay with that then councillor?
Yeah, sorry, males. Yep.
Reading something else. That's fine. Any opposition? Okay, I'll put it those in favour, those against, declare it unanimous for the typist. The next item is on page one on nine.
Uh Madam Mayor, I'm also happy to move, is this E grow O two?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'm happy to move what's in the book, the recommendation in the book. Thank you.
You. Have we got a second up?
Uh second that, Madam Mayor.
Is there any opposition?
No opposition but a question.
Yes.
Um the previous uh item referred to a VPA, this one doesn't refer to a VPA. Is there a reason why there is no VPA or there's no suggestion of a VPA uh with this one?
Mr Smith?
Thank you councillor. The the first one was a recommendation from the local planning panel that council consider negotiating a VPA. Um there's nothing stopping um us from um also including that that recommendation within um this planning proposal. It wasn't included because um although this is a slightly different planning proposal, the council did endorse a very similar planning proposal for the George's Coke Marina uh a year or so, probably two years ago, where that wasn't a requirement, as I understand, but there's nothing stopping council from adding that into this recommendation.
Well, yeah, the movers that way inclined, I I I'm, you know, um could we just add a motion saying that whatever the pre, well, similar to the previous one, that we council uh negotiated or nega- or can't make them negotiate a VPA, but negotiate pretend, help me with the words here, potentially in that.
The council negotiate a possible VPA with the.
That's better. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay, um is there any opposition? As mover and second are happy with that?
I'm happy.
I'm fine with that, Madam Mayor, thank you.
No opposition. I'll put it those in favour, those against, declare it unanimous for the typist. The next items on white, page one two five.
Move that way, Mayor. Second it, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Chitty, councillor Hadid. Any opposition? I'll put it those in favour, seconded by councillor Did. Uh those in favour, those against, declare it carried, it's unanimous for the typist. The next items on page one forty two.
Happy to move that way.
Was that councillor Rhodes?
Yes.
Yeah, and I'm happy to second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Rhodes, moving councillor, seconding. Is there any opposition?
No, Mayor, but um the councillors are very quick tonight. Can I add a number nine if the mover and seconder? And with the input of uh Mr Smith, please?
What is your number nine councillor?
Direct the CEO to present an issues and options paper for time limited DAs in the rural areas. I'll explain it in a sec if anyone needs to. I'll explain it in a sec if anyone needs to. And then a number ten, sorry, there is a number ten.
Okay. Would you like to explain, councillor?
I'll explain that one, then I'll go to number ten. What that one is, is currently there, as you have done with your mayoral minute, madam, oh, sorry, your mayoral direction, ma'am.
Yep.
And things that we have spoken about previously. Obviously, we don't want the rural areas to change too much because we don't know what development's gonna occur. But it's very limited of what you can do in a rural area. For example, and this is probably gonna be controversial, you can park one truck in Khan's Hill on your property, and if you had five acres in the rural area, you can park one truck also, not two, not three. You can have one container in one place, but if you've got five acres, you can also only have one container. Now, my understanding, speaking to Mr Smith this afternoon, and Camden Council did it previously, was council can look at, and obviously with the approval from government, to have time limited DAs in place in order to let people get by without then really contaminating the land and not being able to use it for further development down the track when rezonings occur. So that's pretty much that one. And then number nine, uh, number ten. Oh, and this.
Yeah, councillor Chitty, I'm a bit confused, I have to admit, because I'm looking for the nine, the eight, the seven and the six.
Yeah, sorry, and George. Now, and then can you put it on the next one?
Yeah, just, all right, hold the horses. Let's go back. That's all right. So we've got councillor Rhodes and councillor Ayad moving and seconding this, the motions before you. Is there any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declared carried unanimously again for the typist. Now, page one fifty-three, I think you're on, councillor Chitty.
No, it was actually for your E-Gro O four, madam mayor.
Yeah, one four one.
So I was not going.
I don't, I don't have an eight. I only have a one, two, three. Station. So that's why I'm thinking here's the eight, the seven, the six.
Madam, madam, councillor Chitty may be looking at the recommendations on page one twenty-six, which run. Rather than the recommendations on.
The recommendations on page one four-two.
Yes, which is E-Gro.
E-Gro O four. Yeah, E-Gro O four, which has been moved and seconded and adopted by the council. Councillor, can I just make a suggestion? If you have some burning issues relating to things that Camden's done or not done, can you, um, get that to Mr Smith and we'll sort of look at that in a different way, rather than proceed with recommitting the motion, et cetera?
Uh, just in reference to that, apologies, ma'am. I did speak to Mr Smith this afternoon, and he was asked to be tapped on to the E-Gro zero four.
Right, okay, so that makes.
Sorry, my apologies. I was looking at the right motion, but then looking at the wrong page.
Okay, well, then somebody needs to formally recommit the motion.
I'll do that, ma'am, sorry.
Thank you, councillor.
I'll second it, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Did. I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declared carried. Now, councillor Chitty, your point four is?
What was?
Direct the CEO to present an issues paper for time limited DAs in rural areas.
And then number five, apologies, I haven't had any weekbigs yet today.
Okay.
Have discussions with state government. To, uh, sorry, Mr Smith, how's the one for the current state policy one need to be worded for the, um, the current SEB?
And get through the acting CEO, may I suggest councillor, your, your number four?
Yeah.
Direct the CEO to present an issues and options paper for potential amendments, and I'll slow down so the typist has it, for potential amendments to state environmental policy, state environmental planning policy growth centres to permit in a time limited manner land uses that aren't currently permitted. And that way, it gives you a report about what you're talking about for council's further consideration without committing council to an actual planning proposal.
Thank you, Mr Smith, and thank you, ma'am, for that. And we can get rid of number five.
Okay, get rid of number five, and the mover was councillor Chitty and seconded councillor Did for the recommitment of the motion. Okay, I'm going to put it again. Is there any problem with that mover and seconder with that added on?
No. Madam mayor, can you just explain, uh, what that would mean to the actual proposal as it is in the book for?
It doesn't affect the, it doesn't affect what we want to do with that piece of land. Councillor Chitty, by the looks of it, is asking for further information and a strategic view about how we, what we do about the dilemma. There's a dilemma. Would that be right, councillor Chitty?
Correct, ma'am, and well done on your swift action on this one.
Thank you. I try. Okay, um, any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declared carried once again, and again with the unanimous support of the councillors. All right, the next item's on page one five-three.
I'll move the motion as per the book.
Thank you, councillor Caliander. We got a second up?
Happy to second that.
Thank you, councillor Hall. Yes, councillor Ayad.
I was hoping, um, if the mover and seconder were happy, we could put in a number three. Um, so number three would just be a carry on from number two, and also investigate whether this name could be used in new parks within the area of Middleton Grange.
Is the mover and seconder happy with that?
Hmm.
Councillor Caliander, councillor Hall, it's just looking to see if there's any other option in that area.
I don't see why not, madam mayor.
Mm-hmm. Councillor Hall?
Same here, yes, I'm happy.
Thank you. Is any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declared carried unanimously. The next one's on page one sixty-two.
Just a question, madam mayor, the way that this motion is written, are we giving out any more grants? Or it's been, it's concluded, there's no more grants to go out. So the fifty grants that they're talking about, they've been issued. They were the ones that were deferred from the last meeting?
I, uh, I believe we haven't, but I'll ask the acting CEO to ask the program.
I believe that the bigger case, madam mayor, uh, it's my Scott online.
Acting CEO would be Mr Guthrie, um, the acting manager of City Economy.
Um, yes, through, through you, acting CEO, the fifty grants have really been allocated to successful businesses.
So they've already been allocated.
That, that's correct.
And just not going to be doing any more.
Uh, that's the recommendation, councillor, yes.
Okay.
All right, yeah, I'm happy to.
Thank you, councillor Rhodes. We got a second up?
Uh, just a question there, madam mayor.
Yes, councillor Blue.
Uh, just regarding the, uh, rent relief for small businesses in Liverpool. Can we find a way to see how further we can assist some of those struggling businesses, maybe by qualifying them as per the state government or federal doing to see if some of the rent relief can be extended, um, for a period of time. I have met with a few businesses as usual, and, and some of them are picking up, and some are still in a bit of a struggle. So would be somehow appreciated if, um, on behalf of small business, some of the people I met with, that if we can extend the rent relief. Uh, of course, they need to be, they need to qualify. Uh, uh, in, in whichever way council wanna put it, I'm happy with that, but uh, if we can do that, uh, that would be, um, great, great assistance to small businesses. Some are still, uh, recovering, but they're still struggling. And, and then some of them showed me some numbers that they're, they're still fifty percent down on uh, pro, uh, COVID times.
Uh, councillor Blue, um, I'm very conscious that council has been collecting information on the businesses and surveying them continually through this very troubled time. And we have, as you know, been offering a lot of support, as much as ten.
Absolutely.
I think your idea is, is terrific, but I think we'd have to put up a formal motion that you continue the program. And that, uh, I really, what I would suggest you do is, um, well, there you are, it's in there. So assist likely by extending the rent relief if they qualify, that's in the motion, so that would formalize your idea.
I'm happy with that. Well thought.
Do you want to second that, councillor, um, Blue?
Yeah, I'll second that definitely.
All right, thank you. Uh, is there any opposition?
No, I think that's reasonable. We can look at it again.
Yeah, I hate to say it, but I think the virus is around for a long time.
Yeah, and look, I must say on that note through you, madam mayor, that council have done outstanding work, and, and I'd like to extend that thanks from the businesses I've spoken to, that they're very grateful for what council has done, and that is definitely. So thank you to everyone and all the staff that have reached out and supported small businesses that were in need, desperate need for support. So my, I was asked to thank each and everyone at council that have reached out.
Thank you, councillor Blue. That most certainly would be, um, shared with staff, especially who've worked very hard to.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Um, any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declared carried unanimously. Next item's on page one seven-three.
Ma'am, can I, sorry, apologies, declare a non pecuniary in this item?
Yes, certainly.
Non pecuniary less than significant. Uh, my children do martial arts. Their club is part of ICA, which is holding this tournament. And I'm not sure if they're actually participating in this tournament, but even if they do, they pay their normal fees. So non pecuniary less than significant.
Okay, thank you for that, councillor. Um, we need a mover and a second up?
Yeah, I've moved the motion as per the book. Thanks, ma'am.
I'll second that, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Sheldon. Thank you, councillor Caliander. Any opposition? Even there's no opposition, I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declared carried. I just had to explain to my granddaughter, she has eaten meatloaf before, sorry. Okay.
Unanimous, madam mayor.
Ah, the joys, the joys. Okay, the next item's on page one seven-seven.
I'll move that as per the book, madam mayor.
The councillor Caliander, sorry, who was that? You, councillor Sheldon?
Yes, I was, thank you.
Very much. Any opposition?
The motion before was unanimous?
Yes, it was.
Yes, I don't think you said it.
No, I was busy talking about um, meatloaf. Apology. Okay, um, the next item is moved by councillor Caliander and seconded by councillor Sheldon. It's on page one seven-seven. Reads to receive and notes the report. So, uh, any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declared carried. The next item, um, you don't actually have to say unanimous, councillor. The reason I did that previously was because some of our decisions have to have people's names against them, and it's easier for the typist. If I say unanimous, she knows what names to, to type down.
Thank you, madam mayor.
Next item's on page one ninety-four.
As per the book, madam mayor.
Okay, councillor Caliander.
Madam mayor.
Yes.
I do have a question about this one. There's just one thing.
Stop, stop, stop. We've got a mover for the motion. Do we have a second up?
I'm willing to second it, madam mayor, with, with what I've got.
Okay. Councillor Did, was it? Was that councillor Did who's seconding?
No, I think it's councillor Chitty.
It's a male.
Councillor Rhodes seconded.
No, you're seconding it, councillor Rhodes. Okay then, fine. Now, you wish to comment, councillor Rhodes?
Two one one of the policy. It's headed up halfway down the page. Staff are not to engage in any of the following behaviours at all times. And then fourth point actually reads, shows, uh, show favour towards any child. That's good, you're not supposed to do that. And treat all children equally and fairly. Dramatically, madam mayor, that's wrong. It should have a word in there and should treat all children. So it's not, not to treat all children equally and fairly, but that the staff should, it's just changed the, uh, context.
Okay, so you're amending the grammar.
The policy, yes. There's got to be a word should put in after and. Uh, yes, in the, in the, uh, fourth point on page two one one, where it's reading about staff and not to engage in any of the following behaviours. So that will read, show favour towards any child, so they should not do that, but they should treat all children equally and fairly.
Yep, okay then. We're just amending policy with that grammatical correction. It was a mouthful.
Can I ask you a question when you're ready, ma'am?
Yes, certainly, councillor.
Supportive of the policies, there's no issue there. But if we have a policy like this in place and something goes wrong and is not followed, what implications then on the organisations are there?
I'll ask the appropriate, oh, councillor, uh, Tina has a hand up. Tina?
Uh, through the CEO, uh, thanks to councillor Chitty. Uh, yes, we, um, we're, we're obligated under and, uh, to notify the ombudsman of the, um, of the issue and, um, appropriate actions taken through, through that process. So it's, um, the obligation of the, um, CEO to report, so we'll do that under delegation. But, um, in terms of, uh, uh, from, from previous experience, they provide recommendations back, um, to, to, to council on a, on a better way forward. And then we can act accordingly in terms of any disciplinary that's required.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can, can, can we just change if the mover and seconder will do it? I should know responses. No, it's all fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right.
And.
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, and my apologies for the, the error. That was actually picked up, uh, post, um, printing. So, um, uh, the officers have been, had, had, had picked that up, and my apologies, councillor Rose, we probably should have notified the councillors.
Thanks.
At least it's been picked up.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Uh, no opposition, councillors? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declared carried. Next items on page two one four.
I'll move that as per the book, madam mayor.
Thank you, councillor Caliander.
Second it, ma'am, but I've got another question.
Yes, councillor Rhodes.
About the recommendation in point two, that a further report be submitted to council upon completion of the tender process for the Pump House Cafe. Should it have been and Courtside Cafe?
Sorry, what was that last bit?
Should it include and Courtside Cafe?
I'll ask for, um, the acting CEO.
Uh, Mr Milicic? Uh, through, through the acting, um, CEO, um, yes, the intention is to proceed with Pump House Cafe first and come back to council, and then separately go out to tender for the Courtside Cafe and come back to council afterwards. Um, there has been some interest, uh, from a state agency on the Courtside Cafe, which we will come back to council with.
Can we clarify that in the motion a little bit more?
Um, yes, um, I'd suggest, uh, hang on, further probably submit upon completion of tender process of Pump House Cafe and, and, and also a further report, um, be submitted to council in relation to the Courtside Cafe.
In due course or something.
In due course, yes.
Can we just make that its own dot point, just for clarity?
So after and?
Yeah.
So after, um, cafe, Pump House Cafe, just make it point three and a. and a further report to be submitted, is that okay? That's fine?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm happy with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, is there any opposition? I'll put it those in favour, those against, declare it carried. The next item's on page two one seven.
Question, mayor?
Yes.
Through to miss, through yourself, through to CEO. Um can I direct these to Vish or to George, Mr CEO, just so I've just gone around the world?
Uh thanks councillor Hachidi, I would direct them to the chief financial officer.
Uh the, sorry, uh through the CEO, the chief financial officer isn't isn't here today, so happy to um direct questions to me, councillor.
Thank you, Mr CEO, thank you George. In, I understand your point one, I was just trying to keep it as simple as possible so that it's easy for everyone, the person that may apply and also for staff. How can it be worded so that if you were the owner of a property, for example, a, that was listed as a cafe, who was shut down, that you'd qualify for three months' worth of uh the um the the fee paid back?
So if if you want to keep it simple, um you can apply the rebate to all CBD owners. Um however, we've proposed some capping options, which is based on a similar criteria to a to a uh uh a a job keeper, which is um showing through your base statements of thirty percent drop in revenue. So i- if you want if you wanted to apply to all, then um you that then that would be option one in the paper.
Definitely don't want to apply to all, because there were a lot of businesses that kept operating throughout the, you know, the the close down, this is more targeted at those businesses that were shut down, similar to council doing its rent abatement for its council owned properties. But let's just say there was a landlord who had um one property which was a cafe and four other properties that weren't cafes, and that's all they did. They probably won't be able to show a thirty percent reduction overall because not all properties were affected, we're trying to target it to those properties.
I I understand, so so rather than through the best payment, the thirty percent loss would be specifically applied to the property at question?
Yes, now does that, is that achievable in the way it's worded in option five?
Option five?
Or in recommendation one, which refers to option five?
Question, five, uh specific specifically uh as outlined in the report and specifically applying to the uh the the property at question.
Okay, so that property owner who had shop one that was shut down, as long as they can show that they have thirty percent reduction in their rent for that time for for that quarter, they would be entitled to twenty five percent rebate, is that correct?
Correct, th- th- twenty five percent rebate on their annualised fee, so essentially it's essentially it's a quarter.
But but not on the rate, just on the tiff?
Ch- correct.
Okay. Does, is that achieved in your recommendation, as written?
Um yeah, specifically applying to the levied property at question, I think would achieve it.
Okay. Happy to go with the words that George said, and I'm happy to move.
Okay then, thank you councillor. So is that?
Happy to move that way, yeah.
Thank you councillor Blute, seconder? Don't all rush me.
Yeah, I'll second that, mayor.
Thank you, any opposition?
Yeah, I'll be voting against it, thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Shelton. Any other people that wish to dissent? Okay.
Madam mayor. No, I'll leave it go.
Okay, so it's been carried with and councillor Sheldon voted against, thank you.
And you can record me as voting against, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um now I'm totally lost. Next page is, our next report is on page two two two.
Move that way, thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Shelton.
May.
Thank you, any discussion? I'll put it those in favour, those against, the car- carried. Next item is on page two three O.
Well, happy to say uh to move it, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Doot.
Happy to say, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Blute. Any opposition? I'll put it those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item's on page two three eight. Oops, oh goodness.
Can we move it over to home?
Yeah, move it over to home.
Councillor, if you so choose.
Yeah, and I just ask a question or clarify something, madam mayor?
Yes, hold on a minute, let me get the mover and seconder for this and then I'll most certainly.
Move it by councillor Haggerty, second by councillor Hagerty.
Councillor Hagerty, okay, thank you, yes councillor Rhodes, what is your question?
Madam mayor, just one thing, the intermodal precinct committee, uh the uh minutes only just went out a couple of days ago, there was just a mess up with it or something. How can council uh confirm that um everybody has reported that they've read the minutes?
Well, the matter is to come before the council and I suppose councillors are the ones that have to make that decision, councillor, you don't ask everybody that.
So if 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 the staff can confirm to me.
That they got them in a timely fashion. Uh last the acting CEO, did those minutes uh get received in a timely fashion so it could be read?
Thanks, madam mayor, I'll have to confirm that with the uh.
I can answer that if it's okay, acting CEO?
Yes, give it please.
Thank you, um there was an issue with the timely delivery of the minutes, they only went out this week. Uh they have been sent out, um and uh it's a matter for council if they'd like to defer the intermodal precinct to allow an extra week for for consideration, but they they have gone out now and our sincere apologies for the delay in having those minutes sent out in a timely manner.
Now, that's fine, I'm I'm happy for the minutes to, no, I think it would be wise for council, seeing that this committee has only just started, that we do defer that until they have been, uh people have had a chance to answer it. Not that I think there's anything wrong with it, it's just that I I think that it would be uh a good exercise for council to defer that until the minutes are confirmed by the committee members and uh it's not going to affect anything, the minutes will be approved well before there's another committee meeting, so I think it would just be advisable, if that's okay with the mover and seconder.
Councillor Doot?
Yeah, that's fine.
You're happy to remove that that set of minutes, councillor Hagerty?
Yep, happy with that.
Okay, so with the exception of those particular minutes, the bulk minutes have been put before you, I'll put it those in favour, those against, declare it carried. The next item is on page twenty five, no it's not, it's on page three eleven.
Yes, that was a question that I put up, madam mayor. Um I want to thank council very much for the uh the very detailed report that they gave back, uh even if they couldn't uh uh answer the questions about, you know, when it's going to be done and in fact who's really responsible for the stabilising of the banks of the Georges River and when it will be done. Um I I guess, I I what drew my attention to one thing was that is in section three C, where urban developments and development application, council has been utilising opportunities and funding mechanisms available through urban re-tensification to undertake relevant ri- uh riverbank stabilisation works, such as the planned uh riverbank stabilisation along the Georges River between Atkin Street and Mill Park as part of the Shepherd Street precinct. I wonder if the um intermodal development, did they contribute to any stabilisation of the bank, because it's the it's it's the bank which is uh fronting the uh the intermodal committee, and if we lose all that bank, uh we lose the greenery that is, you know, stopping people from uh Casula Powerhouse from just staring into a yeah factory type complex. So did they, question is, did they contribute to any uh funds for the stabilisation of the Georges River?
Thank you for your question, uh councillor Rhodes, and for your complimentary comments, can I ask uh Mr Aitard to respond to that, please?
Uh thank you, uh CEO, uh and thank you councillor for that question. That uh the part C of 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 section three refers to the, that specific development by coronation along Shepherd Street and is a is is part of the uh that entire precinct, uh there's there's a riverbank stabilisation works, river training works that are being planned and that is purely attributable uh to the development of 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 that precinct. There has been no contribution uh levied uh or sort from intermodal and uh uh we haven't seen the need, there's, we don't, council doesn't believe there is an excess between the uh the the failure of the bank and the intermodal operation or the development.
Well, we might change our mind when the bank is completely washed away then, but uh thank you for your update and I'm uh not not, I'm happy with that, thank you.
Thank you councillor Rhodes, the next um question with notices in the name of councillor Hagerty on page three two nine.
Uh thank you for the answers and thank you for arranging the briefing um with um Sue Allen from uh Western Sydney Parklands, I have a motion that I'd like to put.
Yeah.
And the motion goes like this, that council notes a standalone board for the Western Sydney Parklands is consistent with the vision of a uh of the Greater Sydney Commission's I'll wait for you to catch up. Uh consistent with the vision of the Greater Sydney Commission's metropolis of three cities. Strategy. Uh Western Sydney Parklands, sorry. And a second point, rights to the minister, rights to the relevant minister in support of a standalone board to manage Western Sydney Parklands.
There's a need, we see. After that, council notes, write notes. Thank you. Uh moved by councillor Hagerty, if we've got a seconder?
I'll second.
Thank you, councillor Hagerty, do you wish to talk about your motion?
Uh yeah, look, it's it's consistent with what I've put in the background there, um the same minister that's uh I guess responsible for uh making decisions around these bodies is the same minister that's uh got charge of that three uh city, three three cities of metropolis vision. Um and I guess the idea behind that is that there is a distinct Western Sydney uh Parkland city that has its own needs and its own wants and its own character and its own culture. Um and uh part of that is reflected in um the existence of the Western Sydney Parklands, it's it's advertised and promoted as as Western Sydney's backyard. Um it is different in both its its history and its character and and the way it's come about than um other parks that will be rolled into this body, such as Centennial Park, Moor Park uh and and those kinds of places, so um I think it's important that these bodies are governed by uh you know, people from Western Sydney, if not from Western Sydney, people have the best interests of Western Sydney at heart, um we need our own bodies, we need our own parks, we need our own voices, so that's the the, I guess that's the gist behind this motion.
Mm-hmm. Okay, is there any opposition? I'll put it those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item's on page three three two, in the name of councillor Caliander.
Um madam mayor, I too would like to thank the staff for their comprehensive response. Um I guess the only follow up question I'd have is um in regards to, I think one of the um, one of the identified reasons behind the um the, I guess, the deterioration of Water Grove Lake was um recent development in the area. And I guess obviously the um remediation measures for the, you know, future prospects are quite expensive. Um is there, you know, thought around um using some of the the funds collected in future development to put towards um some of these measures?
I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask one of the staff to answer it.
Thank you, madam mayor.
Uh through the acting CEO, could you nominate a staff member, please?
Mr Aitard?
Yeah, uh thank you, this is through through the CEO, thank you for the question councillor Caliander. Uh look, I I think that uh recent development probably isn't the proper use of term, I mean, this is development that has occurred over time since the inception or since the commencement of development in 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 Water Grove. The point the report is making is that with urban development, you do have uh contaminant sediments, nutrients and heavy metal washed into the into the lake system, uh and I I guess uh we, a a system that wasn't designed uh to treat water. But to to the point of a question about using future funding, absolutely, I mean, council uses a range of funding sources to 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 not only uh uh I guess treat issues with this lake, but a range of other uh works that council needs to undertake. And absolutely, it will be used as funding for whatever work is identified as part of our ongoing monitoring and uh and 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 testing uh the system reveals.
Thank you, Mr Aitard.
Thank you. Moving on, on page three three six, so I'd say there's no answers to that one yet councillor Hagerty. And councillor Chidi, on page three three seven, we await responses in October. All right, moving on to page three three nine, which is in the name of councillor Caliander.
Uh yes, thank you, madam mayor. Um look, I I appreciate the um the CEO response and the recommendation to sort of split the um the the next step into first developing a policy and then the strategy, so I'm happy to um to move the mo- to amend my motion slightly to um develop the integrated pest management policy for the first February twenty twenty one meeting with the strategy to follow subsequently.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you councillor Rhodes, is there any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. The next item is in the name of councillor Tony Hachidi and it's on page three four one.
Happy to move that, mayor?
Madam mayor, could I get some more information on this, thanks?
Certainly, I can ask the mover of the motion to talk to his motion, that might help.
I'm happy if the, I'm happy if the seconder talks, madam mayor.
I haven't got one yet.
Oh, Beeth, I'm sorry, I'm supposed to second that one.
Thank you councillor Chidi, and thank you councillor Hagerty.
Um yeah, so there is a group called Sawyer, um which has nothing to do with um beans, um it's a Serbian youth group, uh and um I guess they've they've approached me, they've approached a number of uh state and federal MPs. Um and uh they were keen to, I guess, somewhere in Liverpool, reflect the uh contribution that Serbian Australians have made to Australia and Liverpool. Um and um I guess in pursuing this, um uh I thought it'd be more appropriate, rather than, I guess, singling out and and um uh one particular group, why don't we uh celebrate all cultures, so uh our indigenous culture and um our many uh other uh cultures, so Serbian, Croatian, Mandaian, Lebanese, all of them. Um and I'm I'm mindful that council is obviously doing some master planning around a number of uh parks uh in the area. Uh and I guess the idea behind this is that uh we we have a look into dedicating one of those parks to multiculturalism and the contribution multiculturalism has made to the country. But in particular, the fact that um, you know, Liverpool is very proud of its multicultural uh its multicultural um nature. Um but also that we acknowledge that, I guess, the, I guess, the genesis of this, the catalyst for this was um the uh the Serbian youth group. So uh the emphasis here is obviously um on multiculturalism um and uh celebrating all cultures. Um I I don't think it would be wise to, I guess, uh single out. Um, I, I don't think it would be wise to, uh, I guess, uh, single out, uh, you know, a certain group. Um, so, yeah, I, I think it's taking that initial seed of an idea from, from Sawyer uh, and, uh, growing it into something that celebrates equally, um, all groups that have contributed to our city and our nation. Um, they've also got a number of letters of support, uh, from, uh, state and federal members from both sides of politics. Uh, my understanding is some of them are even willing to chip in some money. So if that's the case, um, let's, let's, let's do it.
Thank you councillor.
Madam mayor, then, uh, the question that I've got is that I'm still, if it's just going to be called a multicultural park and, uh, we've got the, uh, the Serbian youth community and, uh, good on them for, for doing that, but it's not really multicultural, is it? So, uh, I, I'm just a bit concerned the way the motion is written in that, um, you know, yes, we've got to, uh, you know, acknowledge in Sawyer. Uh, um, but in, it shouldn't be signalled out to that. It should be that we acknowledge the contributions of all culturally diverse communities that make the Liverpool LGA. And I think that we need to investigate a report back to a council meeting, you can advise me on which one, on the possibilities of establishing a multicultural park by contacting all the culturally diverse communities so that we're not showing that, you know, some cultures are being excluded from this. And, um, so contacting all the, the culturally diverse communities in the Liverpool LGA and assess their willingness to participate in a multicultural park. And I think that we need to know the proposed nature of the operation of the multicultural park because in this one, we're saying that we're going to grant or give a part of the park to the Serbian youth. Yes, that's a good idea. But if we're, if it is a true multicultural park and we've got to, uh, you know, not exclude anybody from that, you get into problems with excluding people from that. We need to have a report that shows us what the proposed nature of the operation of the multicultural park is and, uh, possibly where the multicultural park could go. And I'm just wondering if it sort of needs, um, you know, a concept plan that includes costings and possible space where the park could be developed to be included in this motion. I just feel that the motion as is, um, possibly could be opening up a can of worms with people feeling that they're not being included.
Um, I, I agree, a hundred, well, I agree with most of that councillor Rhodes and sort of that was why, um, uh, I guess the eye, you know, it cha-, it evolved from an idea from a, for specifically a Serbian park to a multicultural park. But if you think this motion doesn't go far enough, I'm, I'm happy to work with you as, as long as the, of course, the mover agrees. Um, that we, we get it to a place where, as you said, I, that it's a, um, uh, an area or a space that, that represents, uh, all, all cultures equally.
So.
Mayor, I'm quite happy with the way it's written. In point five, it says support the establishment of a Liverpool multicultural park.
Yep.
Um, in, in relation to, to Sawyer, I think it's important, and yes, I'm from a multicultural background as well. Um, but I, I think it's important to acknowledge them in this motion, given that they're the ones that really did the groundwork with the local state, um, and federal MPs. And the local state and federal MPs have actually said that they're happy to contribute, um, if we were able to get this off the ground. It still achieves what councillor Rhodes is saying. And I, I, I must say, my initial motion that councillor Haggerty tore to shreds and rewrote, um, made it a lot better than what I was actually proposing and changed it from just the Sawyer to the multicultural park. And I think with the eight points there, gives direction to council to establish the multicultural park, but to also acknowledge Sawyer in it.
Yeah. I think, I think everybody understands the gist of it councillor and I think you're right, it does seem to cover all aspects and the sentiment is, is, uh, expressed by councillor Rhodes as well. Thank you, um.
I have difficulty voting for the motion as it is written because I think it is divided rather than.
That's, that, okay, well, we've got, then, that's fine councillor. I'm going to move the motion. Who's opposed? Councillor Rhodes, you're opposed.
Yes.
Fine. Any other people who opposed? Okay, the remainder of the councillors support the motion. Thank you, carried. Next item is on page three, four, two, in the name of councillor Haggerty.
Thank you, madam mayor. Um, yeah, look, I, I think this one is, is straightforward. Um, I note that there was some media regarding, uh, the ministers that are in the Herald today. Um, but essentially, you know, every, every month or every second month, there's a motion that comes to this council about, um, the need for, uh, better infrastructure. So whether that's public transport, roads, schools, hospitals. Um, it's been a common theme and it's also been a somewhat, um, you know, unanimous theme. Um, it's, you know, it's cross-party lines and I think we all agree that, um, this area, uh, is, is underserved when it comes to public transport, uh, schools, hospitals and, and other, uh, infrastructure. Um, so this motion merely notes that, uh, the minister, Rob Stokes, um, has, has said that gets councils that set their local housing supply targets. Um, and that, uh, with, with growth and with, with population growth, um, you know, that needs to be supported with adequate infrastructure, both, you know, physical infrastructure and social infrastructure. So, um, you need all that, that other stuff that comes with it. Um, now, uh, I don't want this to be taken as a, a, a threat in any way. So I've, I've point three there that notes what we, we, as we have been, we will continue to work very constructively with state and federal governments um, on, uh, on housing targets and, and the infrastructure that comes with them. Um, from all reports, we have a, a very good relationship, um, with the, the major departments, both state and federal, um, especially when it comes to things like the airport, uh, Fifteenth Avenue, um, and, and, and some of those other, uh, large pieces of infrastructure that are coming to our area. Um, but this simply is just about acknowledging the fact that it, um, they're our, they're our housing targets. We set them based on, um, what we think is acceptable. And I think a large part of that is, um, you know, are we getting uh, the requisite infrastructure that, that comes with building new communities? You know, a, a new community is not just a, a bunch of apartments and houses. Uh, it's, it's a post office, it's, it's a services New South Wales, it's a school, it's a hospital, it's, it's all those things. So you can't build a community, uh, without all three govern-, levels of government working together.
Thank you councillor. Do we have a second up?
Can I ask a question, madam mayor?
Yes, certainly.
Yep, yep, miss.
Thank you councillor Kenny. Yes councillor Rhodes, what is your, um?
Um, I, um, I'm just wondering what, what opportunity we have to actually set our own housing targets as, you know, uh, we've got the difficulty that if we receive DAs, they've got to be, um, processed. So I'm a little bit confused by the, the letter from Rob Stokes where he's saying that councils are responsible for deciding their own local housing supply targets. Um, if we, and I believe that we have met our housing targets now, we still can't stop the developments from proceeding. Um, so I take it then councillor Haggerty, that you're pointing that we do need the, the infrastructure, which is great. But, uh, I don't think there's any way for us for stopping, uh, housing developments because it's controlled by the DAs that you receive.
I might be best at this point councillor, if I just ask one of the staff to give us their view on this because they are doing it every day. So I'll ask the acting CEO to nominate a staff member.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, through the acting CEO. Um, so council has set its housing target through the recently adopted Liverpool Local Housing Strategy. So that's currently with the Department of Planning for their, um, their approval. Uh, local housing studies, um, and the, the local housing strategy, I should say, uh, has to be endorsed by, uh, the Department of Planning before it has, um, legal weight. Uh, through the development of the, um, local strategic planning statement. We've worked, um, collaboratively as noted in, in point three of the, of the notice, notice of motion uh, with both the Greater Sydney Commission and the Department of Planning to set an appropriate, um, housing target. Um, and, and that is reflected in the local housing strategy that was adopted by council, uh, last month, I believe it was.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Just for further clarification, madam mayor, if I may. So, um, David, that means that, uh, you know, no matter what we set our housing target, and let's say we met it, that we can't stop the development in our local area. Because you've got to process DAs. You can't simply review the DA, which might be for, uh, greater housing densities than what, you, you know, the, the target that we set.
Yeah, certainly through the acting CEO, the housing targets are for strategic planning, um, purposes. So do we need to zone more land, um, to achieve that housing target for the next, you know, six to 10 year period? Or do we have sufficient capacity so the local housing strategy identified some actions that council can take to ensure that we can achieve that housing target? Primarily councillor, we have sufficient zoning available, but with also the planning proposals that council endorsed in principle tonight, plus other planning proposals that will be coming forward over the next couple of months. Uh, council's well on track, uh, to, to meet the six to 10 year housing target. In relation to development applications that are lodged with council, per the current zone, we assess it on merit in accordance with the zone, the objectives and the development controls that are in place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, I'm go-, any opposition?
Madam mayor, can I just say something on this one?
Yes councillor Chitty.
I'm actually disappointed with councillor Haggerty on this one because point three doesn't go far enough. Um, I, I, I think this constructive stuff that we've been doing with state and federal governments about infrastructure is getting us absolutely nowhere. Um, there's a lot of land that is zoned. We have heaps of it. Our problem is the infrastructure and we still want to work constructively with state and federal government. I think it's time we get the constructive out of the way and this nicely, nicely stuff. And so if you are going to zone land, make sure there's a sewer pipe in that area first before you're actually rezoned it. So we can deliver the housing. At the moment, in the growth precinct out in the west, in our south, in our western part of it, you can get your sewer out through Leppington Train Station, but you can't get it out through a pipe. Now, there, there's no point in all these housing targets and saying that's what we're going to deliver. There's no point in having a subdivision that comes to council and the developer needs to leave four or five blocks because they have to do a stormwater collection, which looks ugly because it gets overgrown and attracts all these insects. I think council needs to go in hard to the state government and say, if you are going to rezone land, we need the infrastructure. We need the sewer pipes, we need the stormwater pipes, we need the services that you're going to provide for this area. So people don't come knocking on council's door saying, where are the services? At the end of the day, they're happy to rezone it, we're happy to collect the increase in rates, they're happy to collect the increase in the land tax value, but the infrastructure is just not there. I think this softly, softly with them in relation to infrastructure. We need to throw out the door and we need to go in there hard and make sure they deliver.
Thank you councillor. Um, from memory, I believe we did take somebody to court over these issues and failed. But anyway, um, does somebody wish to make a comment on, uh, ca-, the acting CEO? Um, because we know there's lots of representation made on these matters.
Thank you, madam mayor. Uh, councillor Achee, I, I can assure you that there, it, councils across the region haven't adopted a softly, softly approach to this. They've lobbied very hard and very directly around this issue. That has led to a number of actions, one of which, um, is that the Productivity Commission were commi-, have been commissioned by state government to undertake a review. That report is scheduled for October, which will address some of these issues. Um, we're also lobbying very hard through the governance structures of the city deal and with the new Western, Western Parkland City Authority, um, to address some of the wider issues that you raise. But I would invite, uh, Mr. Smith to make any further comment to that.
Thank you. Through the acting CEO, I, I, I would concur with tho-, with those comments. Certainly, uh, infrastructure, particularly in the Austral growth area, uh, has been problematic with development applications not able to proceed because infrastructure's not available. Um, but yes, absolutely, we do work very hard, um, you know, particularly with Sydney Water to get that infrastructure rolled out in the most timely manner possible, particularly given that it's been zoned for a number of years.
So I can assure you councillor Chitty, behind the scenes, there is a lot of work going on and it isn't softly, softly, can I assure you? But, uh, having said that, you have a motion before you. Is there any other, um, discussion?
Um, I'm happy to take on councillor Chee's wording if, if he's, you know, willing to.
Maybe you, what you need to do is to can, maybe a point five, acknowledge the continued lobbying by council for the improvement of infrastructure and, um, that be a priority. That way you can release some sort of, maybe a campaign or funding or whatever with internally to give the staff a bit more scope. Okay, I'm going to put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. The next items are our, oh, the CEO has something, the acting CEO has information to share with councillors.
Madam mayor, if I may, before we move on.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I lodged a motion that states that no construction or demolition work is to commence at civic place until a tenant has signed a binding lease. But, you know, forty percent of the loan repayments. Um, the intention of this was to save rate payers' money and protect council's financial position, madam mayor, and it doesn't seem to be on the agenda.
No, it's not on the agenda and there's a good reason why. And I will ask the acting CEO to actually explain to the staff, to the council.
Thank you, madam mayor. Um, as councillors will be aware, I'm, I'm required under clause three point one eight of the Code of Meeting Practice to report any items of business which have been excluded from the agenda without giving details of the business. I've excluded one item from the agenda for two reasons. Firstly, it wasn't submitted within the required time under clause fifteen point four of the code. And secondly, because the implementation of the business would be unlawful under clause three point one eight of the code. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. We can't discuss it any further. If you wish to take.
I would just like to see clarification that there was legal advice given, whether internally.
I can assure you councillor, there was legal advice given.
Thank you, madam mayor. Um, I'd appreciate a copy of that legal advice. And I'd like to add that I actually messaged the CEO about this and the CEO did say that, um, he would investigate. And then I received no further correspondence from the CEO via SMS. And I have sought my own legal advice and it turns out that my motion is legal and should be on the agenda.
Well councillor, I'm sorry, as the chair, I'm also ruling it out of order because it's in a form, a rescission motion and you can't have a rescission motion because the original motion has been enacted. So it gets chucked out on those grounds as well.
Madam mayor.
I'm going to mute.
Mandatory council resolved Code of Meeting Practice adopted on the twenty fifth of September twenty nineteen. It states in section three point nine.
Thank you councillor, you've been officially muted. Thank you, we're moving on. Now the next item is.
The CEO, if I may continue reading out from the.
No, you can't.
Resolved.
You're ruled out of order councillor, stop it.
Section three point nine. Madam mayor, I would like to continue what section.
No.
Madam mayor.
No councillor, you cannot continue. It is out of order. You are to please be quiet and, and observe.
Madam mayor, I'm very disappointed.
I, I appreciate your disappointment, but you have been given.
Madam mayor, through the CEO, if I may continue.
No, you can't.
Through the CEO. Through the CEO.
Mayor, are we up to presentations yet?
We're up, uh, yes, there's presentations, but, uh, excuse me councillor, councillor Ed. I'm chair of this meeting, you're not. You have been ruled out of order. I've asked you to be quiet, please be quiet and observe.
Madam mayor, section three point nine.
All right, you can.
Move it to the waiting room.
Madam mayor, I'd like this matter investigated, please.
No councillor, you're not going to have it investigated. It has been dealt with in a proper way and the right protocol.
If you wish to leave.
Sorry, we're moving on to presentations. Councillors, do you have any presentations?
Uh, I have a, uh, presentation.
Yep.
Um, so the, uh, federal member for Fennar, Andrew Lee, uh, has published a book, uh, I think this week with, um, a gentleman named Nick Terrell and it's called Reconnected, A Community Builder's Handbook. And, uh, the book looks at some of the most successful community organisations and initiatives in Australia. Basically looking at, I guess, community building in the twenty first century. Um, uh, so it looks at, uh, conversation groups, community gardens, park runs and, um, pub choir, which we've all, you know. gardens, park runs and um pub choir, which we've all, you know, seen uh bits and pieces of in uh Liverpool. Um but early on when he was drafting the book, um he did put a call out for uh examples. And um I forwarded on uh the Farrington Collective, which we're no doubt all familiar with, the the group that um worked with the men's shed and council to do up Farrington Park. And I'm happy to report that um Lisa Wharton, who I guess is a sort of unofficial leader of that group, um was was quoted and there's a section um in this book, uh this mentions Liverpool City Council and the Farrington Collective uh in quite a positive light and as a uh and a fantastic example of community building. So um I'd like to commend the Farrington Collective and obviously all council staff um now becoming uh published.
Uh is that book going to be donated to the library councillor?
Oh, I'm I I'll swing a copy. How's that? I'll I'll make.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you very much for your presentation. Now we're proceeding with the confidential items, um remembering these are confidential. Is there any that people wish dealt with in confidence?
I'd like mine dealt in confidence, mayor.
Which is the number one?
Yeah, I believe it is actually.
Madam Mayor, can we maybe discuss my matter in confidential, please?
No councillor, it's not on the agenda.
Madam Mayor, this isn't fair.
Councillor, it is fair.
Isn't fair and it's out of line. I have not been treated fairly.
I will actually have to.
Represented the community and I submitted a valid motion which should be on the agenda. Yes, madam. It is a valid motion and you as the mayor should know that, madam mayor.
Councillor, this might come as a shock to you, but I actually do know it's not valid for various reasons, including one that I also stated. So enough.
Do you mind please clarifying to me? Because I have the. I have the Code of Meeting Practice in front of me and I have highlighted the sections which are relevant to my notice of motion.
Councillor, your motion was actually technically a rescission motion on a motion that has been activated. That automatically knocks it out. You can't bring in a motion that gets rid of a motion that's already in operation. So even if you don't look at the actual legalities of it, from that aspect, it's inappropriate.
Madam Mayor, it should be given the opportunity to be voted on.
Councillor, you follow the process like everybody else. Now please, please, follow the process of this meeting and the protocol.
Madam Mayor, I demand an investigation.
You're not getting one councillor.
They reporting to.
I would suggest you write to ICAC or you write to the OLG if you're unhappy with this, what's going on.
Which I will do.
Good. I'm pleased that you're going to do that. That will make you feel a lot happier. Now, we've got number one, we want to go into confidence. Is there any other ones that people wish to raise in confidence? No, well then I'll go to conf o two.
Madam Mayor, can I move uh CONF o two into confidential, just in case I do something wrong?
All right, okay. Conf o three on page 1044. Would someone like to move a motion?
Um madam mayor, it's it's an awful lot of money that is going out for tender. I just have one question. And uh the question would be uh that council really does guarantee that uh we're uh following protocol and procedures that um accounts for the amounts of money that are being spent on these tenders. Would it be possible for council to provide councillors uh with how much or if it would be possible for council to perform uh these tenders by internally by council staff?
I'll ask the acting CEO to make a broad comment on that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can assure councillors that I we exercise the highest levels of probity across the organisation. Uh and that applies to tender processes, the preliminary work to that and all the way through those processes. Um we are for major issues, uh they're also reported through to the ARIK uh subcommittee and committee. Uh and we we are obliged to ensure that those standards apply.
Well, uh thank you very much, um acting CEO. Uh the 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 fear that I have got is that um I have it reported to me from several sources about regeneration companies maybe robbing council tender work. Um and that leads me, of course, to be fearful that councils might be being ripped off, overexaggerated.
Councillor, I'd be careful with those sort of accusations in a public domain.
Not an accusation, madam mayor.
No, no, we'd just be very careful in supporting for your own protection.
Yeah.
Through you, through you, madam mayor, can you can you declare councillor, who are those people that reported to you? That is a very serious matter.
Yes, I agree with councillor Balut.
You should be on the record.
I I would, look, I would suggest councillor, we move that part, conf three into confidential as well. Okay, conf o four, conf o four is on page 1066.
And uh again, madam mayor, just a couple of questions. Um what is the system that we're operating at the moment? Because I know we do get out of hours calls and as matter of fact, we've had 99 of them, uh violations that have call that have been happening out of hours. How are they addressed at the moment?
I'll ask the CEO to um acting CEO to ask for reply.
Mr Smith, I know this is something that's dear to your heart.
Thank you. Through the acting CEO, if I may, I might refer that to Miss um Mardini who's on the line, um who manages um the the compliance department. Miss Mardini?
Yeah, good evening. Um through the CEO. Look, we we have the after service, they take the complaint, they record it and we deal with it the next day.
So that's the current system that we're.
For the general complaints for animals, we we operate 24 hours. If we get a complaint, we will attend for animal related complaints. For general complaints, they go through the after hours and they're recorded for us to do the next day.
My concern is that um I I don't know whether anybody asked in the uh in the motion for this to be a 24 hour, seven day a week with officers on call. And um I I I just wonder whether it would be possible for, say, four of the officers to start at 7:00 AM and finish at 3:00 PM, which is five day a week, 38 hours per week that you pointed out to is a necessity. And perhaps two officers work from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM, Monday to Friday, and from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Saturday and Sunday, which again would be 38 hours. Could could that be considered?
I'm through the CEO. I I would have to look at that and get back to you.
Well then, madam mayor, could could we, could I move a motion that we defer this matter until a further report can be provided?
It's a matter for council. If you wish to move a motion that this be deferred till you have further information, it's your perfect right to do that, councillor.
Okay, well, I would like to move a motion that the matter be deferred until uh a further report can be provided addressing. The actual. Is to be available on call 24 hours, seven days a week. And the alternate viability and costing of. Number two. Now, I'm only saying for officers, that of course would be in further advice. Start at 7:00 AM and finish at 3:00 PM, five days a week. And finish at um 3:00 PM, five days a week. And the two officers work from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Monday to Friday. And from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Saturday and Sunday. And I think um another thing that possibly I'd like advice on in this other report is whether it's possible to have all the officers uh trained uh to be able to address any of the compliance issues. Not have compliance officers specialising in certain issues to council. So that would be number three. And the cost of that of doing that perhaps. I appreciate council's uh report and everything, but um I if if we could get a report on these matters, I'd certainly feel more comfortable about making a decision.
Okay, that's moved by councillor Rhodes. We can second up?
Happy to second.
Thank you councillor Hall. Uh I think everybody understands where you're coming from councillor Rhodes. Um um any other discussion?
I very much agree with the sentiment of councillor Rhodes. Um uh yeah, I'm just worried is is this is that first point a little too operational?
It is very, it was looking very operational to me, but I think I think if we looked at it in terms of um being informed rather than directing, um I think we managed to get out of that problem, that the matter be deferred till a further report can be provided addressing informing the councillors of of the options available regarding officers being available 24/7 and the alternative ability and the possibility of the feasibility of the following. And the feasibility and the costings of the following. And that should, that then isn't just an operational directive. I think it's more asking the question. So feasibility and costings of the following. And then that picks up those two points and it softens it a little so it doesn't look like a directive in the in an operational manner.
And and um. No, that's, I'm happy with that, madam mayor.
All right. Is there any opposition to that? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. The next item is conf o five.
Move that way. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Shilton. Second up. Thank you councillor Hall. Any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it carried. Next item is conf o six.
Move that way. Thank you, madam mayor.
Happy to second it.
Thank you councillor Hall. Any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, declare it unanimous, given nobody said they didn't agree with it. Uh next one's conf o seven.
Um madam mayor, that should really be discussed with the other one.
While councillor Rhodes is doing that, can I just ask a question, mayor, if you don't mind?
Sure councillor.
Um point three of the recommend, and I won't go into what's in there, but point three of the recommendation on line four, that figure at the end there, wasn't that changed recently by council?
So councillor, which part of it was?
So it's on page 1084. Uh recommendation point three, line four. That figure right at the end there.
Must be reading the wrong page. Is it 1084 you're talking about?
Yeah, 1084.
Yeah.
Then it goes recommendation one, two, then recommendation three.
Yep.
Line four.
One, two, three, four. Okay.
The final figure.
Yep.
Yep. I thought during the COVID uh extraordinary or one of those meetings, that number was reduced.
I I can't recall councillor, I'd have to.
Yeah, that's right. Through the CEO on notice, that's fine if you can just look into it.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, so what are people doing with conf o seven?
Can we just put that into confidential as well?
No worries. Uh conf o eight on page 113.
Move that way. Thank you, madam mayor.
Councillor Sheldon, we get a second up?
I'll second that, madam mayor.
Councillor Hall, was there any opposition? I'll put it, those in favour, those against, the car carried. Next one's on page 118.
Happy to move, why, madam mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Rhodes, second up.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Seconded in lots of places. Councillor Sheldon, seconding. Any opposition? I'd put it, those in favour, those against, current carried. Um we now will move, formally move into closed session, but we I think under part, hopefully D, she says, and probably B. Um and we will have a closed session, but before we open our closed session, we'll have a 10 minute break. Moving the council meeting now into open session so we can report on record what the decisions were made in closed sessions. And I don't know whether I'm going to read them or, because I'll be here till midnight. But we'll see, how we go. Okay. Is this the first one, George? Okay, the the first one is conf o one and the decision of council was that we move, we um undertake a market assessment to understand what technology in the market with a view of undertaking competitive selection process. It was carried. The next item was conf o three, two, one, zero, two, um that council. The council approves the acquisition of lot 1047 DP 2475, being 245 Sixth Avenue Austral with the terms outlined in this confidential report and authorises the acting CEO or his delegate to execute any document under power of attorney necessary to give effect of this decision. Results classify lot 1047 DP 2475 as operational and in accordance with the Local Government Act. And that was carried. The next item is oh conf o three, I think. And the o three is um, oops, accepts a tender from the following people for a three year contract and they're listed there. I won't read them all out. It's public knowledge. Makes public its decision. This report has been brought to council because the chief executive officer's instrument of delegation approved by council in accordance with the current provisions under section 377 of the Local Government Act 1993 only permits CEO to approve and not to reject tenders of the value of 2 million. Therefore, clause 32771 I of the Local Government Act 1993 of the council may by resolution delegate to the CEO the acceptance of tenders to provide services currently provided by members of the staff to the council. Delegates to the CEO finalize all details and sign the letter of acceptance following the publication of the draft minutes of council's website for tender, giving it contractual effect in accordance with the delegated authority. Keeps confidential the details supplied in this report containing information on the. Um on the whatever prejudiced, keeps confidential suppliers brought on the submissions received pursuant to section 10A2DI of the Local Government Act 1993 as it contains commercial information of confidence nature that would if disclosed prejudice to commercial position of a person supplied it. Seven receiver future report a strategic panel meeting that investigates the opportunity of council staff to undertake the restorations themselves rather than requesting tenders. That was carried. And an o seven accepts the tenders from the following um offerers as tender RCL 2989, tree maintenance services for Porsche A, tree maintenance, the removal of two years with the option extended by one by 12 months, contract term at the GST. Um inclusive price says the three tenderers make public this decision regarding the tendering RCL 2989 tree maintenance service this brought has been brought to the council because the chief executive officer's instrument of delegation approved by council in accordance with the current provisions of section 377 of the Local Government Act 1993 only permits the CEO to approve and not reject and not to reject tenders of the value of 2 million. Therefore, subclause 3771I of the Local Government Act 1993, a council may by resolution delegate to the CEO the acceptance of the tenders to provide. To provide, um I've lost my place now. I've lost my place now. Oh, thank you, by members of the staff of the council. Delegates to the acting CEO to finalise all details and sign the letter, pardon me, of acceptance following publication of draft minutes of the council website for tender, giving it contractual effect in accordance with the delegated authority. Keeps confidential the details supplied in this report containing information submissions received pursuant to section 10A2D1 DI of the Local Government Act 1993 as it contains commercial information of confidential nature that would if disclosed prejudice to commercial position of the person supplied it. Six receives a future report strategic panel meeting that investigates the opportunities for council undertake the restorations themselves rather than requesting tenders and that was carried. Given there was no other business of the day, the meeting is now closed and I thank everybody for attending and I hope everybody stays safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you.